Fifty-four private homes. Everybody's up this way, that way, of what's going on. So, we're gonna come down a brass tacks. What's the law? Okay? Sorry.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, nobody heard me?
It's recording.
We agree.
Oh, okay. Anyway, what I told them, I'd come here, and I wish anybody else wanted to come, they obviously didn't. There's nothing much we could do but look at the law and suggest an ask back. Is there anything all of us can do? We come up with a wrinkle to make this thing so strong. And a quick thing what we've done now is to look at other insurance companies. So, when you're in FEMA, and I had, I'm not bending the people's ears, but we went ahead and got private insurance company, and it helped. So, we tell people when they get depressed in their private homes or whatever, we'll come back and give you information. That's why I wish people were here to, all your people could feed them information, what they could do to save themselves, or come up with a new idea to feel better, what they can do with the times we're in with the insurance, which is a crisis. Okay, I said my mail, anyway, that's my, anymore, anybody want to add?
Tammy, if you can help me a little bit here, what is this supposed to be about?
I'm gonna defer to the city manager, who's the one who prepared the agenda.
Okay.
What I could do is just give you a brief introduction, and then myself and our building official, Mr. Goldberg, who is a certified flood plane manager, would be available for questions or comments. What you see in front of you is an ordinance that effectively repeals Section 8 of the City Land Development Code. And I've put in the packet here both a strike through and a completed version of the ordinance. It's very lengthy, it's rather voluminous. It is required to be reviewed by you and a recommendation by the board made for the city council's consideration. We're planning on putting this on the city council agenda for their consideration for first and second reading during the month of August. Either the first and second reading in August, or the second meeting in August and the first meeting in September. What it does is it repeals, once again, Section 8, and the state of Florida is requesting that all local governments proceed with this adoption of this modified ordinance. And it effectively brings the City of Port Ritchie Flood Management Regulations into conformance with the Florida Building Code. And so, with that, I'll let you make your comments as you see fit, ask questions as you see fit. I put a PowerPoint presentation that was actually developed by the state of Florida in your packet. We have it available on the screen if you decide you want to refer to anything and ask questions. Bill is more knowledgeable than I am on flood plane regulations, and we'll both do the best we can along with the rest of the staff to help you on this. So, with that, it's at your discretion.
All right.
I would like to ask, I did read through this and looked at all the strike throughs, read the notes. I didn't see anything in here that was monumentally different. I did notice that there's some adjustments made, but is anything in here of choice, that we have a choice over?
Yes, you can actually make it more stringent. See, this is the minimum required in order to be, comply with the state regulations as far as having a flood plane ordinance. Any, every jurisdiction is required to have some sort of a flood plane ordinance in order to comply with FEMA regulations, Florida Department of Emergency Management regulations, as well as to be able to participate in the CRS, which is what sets your regulations as to what you're gonna pay for flood insurance. If you do not have an ordinance, you can't participate in these things. What this ordinance does is, this particular one here is written by the state that meets all the minimum criteria. You can make it more stringent, like for instance, substantial damage. You can change, you know, one year is what they consider at fifty percent. You can change the percentage, you could reduce it, you can't make it any less stringent. You can also, like Pasco County, they, their substantial damage is in a five-year period of time. There's some counties to the south, Pinellas County, it's the lifetime of the building. So, if you get to fifty percent at all during any time of the building, it could be ten years, you have to completely rebuild the structure and make it entirely up to code. That's up to you. You can also change elevation. There's already a one-foot freeboard built into this. I requested when they were writing the ordinance, that make, that's a, so everything has to be at least one foot above flood elevation. You can increase it even further. You can go as much as four feet if you choose to. So, you can make it more stringent if you want.
That wouldn't be my choice at all, Bill, of making anything more stringent. The only question I had is, this is the minimum, there's been no additions to make it more strength than the state requires.
Just the one foot above.
I noticed you changed the, unmapped areas or areas of undetermined flood plain. You changed it from a two-foot to a three-foot above highest adjacent grade.
Well, that's a way of determining, if it doesn't tell you, you have to go out and make a determination based on what's, you know.
Right, that's the unmapped or un-.
Which we don't, we don't have any of that in the city.
That was the next question, do we have any undesigned?
No, no, we do not.
So, that's a moot point.
Everything has a designated elevation within the city.
Okay, that's a moot point then.
For here it is, yes.
Okay.
Bill?
Hi.
May I, I'm sorry, may I? I'm a little bit vague on one area in particular, on the flood requirements, and that's, in the past, everything was FEMA. All of the insurance for the city was FEMA, all the insurance for any homeowner was FEMA. We're getting into a situation now where, well, let me back up just a little bit, and then in lieu of the, the city managing the FEMA program to make sure that everything fell in line with FEMA requirements, the city got a big discount on their FEMA costs, correct?
Correct, that's what the CRS is about, that's your CRS rating.
So, now that we have a number of other free enterprise insurance companies, not FEMA, providing flood rates now, how is that gonna affect us? Because we're no longer, these houses are no longer under FEMA requirements, now they're under their own insurance companies' requirements.
Well, my understanding, it's still subsidized and still, it's much like bank loans, they're still federally backed, or?
So, these insurance companies that are coming in here as private companies have to fall, fall under the same requirements as FEMA?
No, correct. I mean, they're even working off of a, like for instance, using a copy, this is typically what you'll pay for different flood insurance, they're working off of that. So, they're, they still set what the regulations are going to be and the percentage of the discount based on what your CRS rating is, that's still the same regardless who's selling the insurance per se.
You got a lot of options, you got options, that's what's all for you, options. For example, San Pebble, of building 10, 11, and 12, which I'm familiar with, the insurance with FEMA last year would have been four hundred, round figures, sixty thousand dollars. Phase one, not to have a balancing act of our neighbors, they're paying eighteen thousand for five buildings, we got three. Well, because we're in that plane, we're in that area, and people have to just understand that's it. And as far as grandfathered, it's not that much of a, grandfathered is yes, a plus, but it's not everything they think it is. In other words, what's your grandfather, these people paying next to nothing because of the location, a hundred percent, we're in more area of going under, we're the ones. So, what we did, we got another outside insurance company, we did, we got away from FEMA, we're down to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for full coverage. On the four hundred and fifty, sixty thousand, we had eighty percent coverage. Now, we got a hundred percent coverage, I forget who with it, the Lloyds of London, whatever it is, the, one of our people runs the treasury, he runs it, and that's what we got. So, we have options. I think, what, maybe I'm, I read all that I asked you, I questioned you and you helped me a lot, I thank you. There's many things you can do, and am I correct that the city has looked everything where we're, I hate to use the word, because when you love your city, you don't want to use degrading. We're in a, down, we're down in a depressed area, okay? We got, legally, we got put in a position. Did we pick up something on that deal with the insurance companies? Is there any break there that people give when there's, this area is a little, you know, am I correct?
Yeah, you're, I mean, you're always gonna, you realize some sort of savings, you know, by complying with these regulations as well as if you exceed them.
To look in every one of them, you gotta look at everything and ask every, especially the new insurance companies. I think they work a little different than the government, not that I'm against the government, but the government is so, so big, but you got an insurance company, they specifically give you more detail as best they can to compare with FEMA. And FEMA, right now, we do better with the private insurance company, which was not allowed before. So, now we're in that, so there's been a release of pressure on the city from letting us go to take care through a private insurance company like Lloyds of London, okay? So, we're doing everything, well, you guys, everybody here is doing everything they can with their heart, right? Tell people before I came here, living where I live, there's nothing more we can do except ask for questions, ask for help, ask the politician, what can we do? Are they gonna knock out this, which we discussed, are we gonna knock out that grandfathered? All right, that's up for legislative, that's gonna be a vote. Do you agree? There's gonna be a vote, who's gonna win this election? And maybe, but it still doesn't mean they're gonna hurt somebody, they're gonna do the best they can. My, I'm kinda naive. I think the guys on top, when they're looked at real close, they're doing the best they can to protect everybody, and that means everything in the states and everybody in this country. We try to do the right thing when we overplan to save people from destruction, okay? What happened in Long Island, New York, where I lived, I'm eighty-one years old, I never could believe, I told you about the house? I lived there, oh, water will never reach here, it's gone. Long Beach is gone, homes are gone, you say, what? Look, you couldn't believe what happened, you get everything together, and that's why we say nothing happened here. When it does, are we ready for it? That's the key. So, I bend in here, but I, I tell people, don't give up, come up with ideas, go to meetings, maybe there's more we can do. I have no idea what more we can do. Reality is, we got a problem, we gotta address that ocean, that's the boss, that's it, so.
Bill?
Okay.
Just for purposes of trying to help with your question and comment, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that this ordinance, which repeals and implements a new Section 8, allows for the continued participation by the city and its associated properties in the National Flood Insurance Program. If we did not adopt this, we place that participation in jeopardy.
I have, okay.
And so, I think that, you know, this doesn't improve the lot of most folks in the city and property owners, it maintains it. And so, because if we're not in conformance with the requirements of the Florida Building Code, which we will be after this is adopted, we place our participation in the National Flood Insurance Program in jeopardy. Am I correct with that, Bill?
That's correct, that's exactly the case.
I would agree with that. Now, what, have all the counties or all the cities in the state of Florida adopted this? Or is there anybody that has not, had said, no, we don't want this, we'll pay our own insurance, we don't need FEMA?
Well, the ones that I checked with are doing it, because they've been asked to do it, and they don't wanna, they don't wanna place their participation in jeopardy. We're a little bit different because we're more impacted, most of the properties in the City of Port Ritchie are impacted.
Yes.
And are required to have flood insurance.
Okay, my, I guess my issue revolves around FEMA. If we elect not to have, not to abide by FEMA, we elect not to do this, okay? I'm just being hypothetical here, what happens?
Well, I think our rating system degrades, or CRS rating degrades.
And you will not be able to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program.
Okay, okay.
And you see, it may.
If we elect not to do, not to go there, what happens?
It may not have been beneficial for San Pebble to re-up with the federal flood insurance.
Didn't pay, yeah.
And so, and so you pursued your own.
Yeah.
However, many properties may still find a lower rate by renewing their flood insurance under the federal program. If we don't do what we've been asked to do, they would not have that opportunity. And they, so their situation.
What happens to the city?
What's that?
How much of a discount does the city get off of its standard rate because they're enforcing these FEMA guidelines?
I don't know without checking on that.
Five percent, fifty percent, do we have any idea?
I'd have to check on that, are you familiar with it, Bill?
Yeah, it's, it's, I think it's like five percent per rating number down from ten, so like we're sitting at a seven.
Have we looked at what other private providers can do in the way of insurance? Maybe they can come down lower than what FEMA is.
Well, that's the individuals, that's up to the individual property.
Why can't the city, no, why can't the city do that?
Well, every property would be different, and I, we haven't done that because that's really the property owners, at the property owner's discretion.
Buildings that the city owns, the city gets a discount for the buildings that it owns from FEMA, from the National Flood Insurance Program, correct?
I'm not sure what buildings the city has flood insurance on, if, I'm not sure what the, I don't know what the insurance policies are in regards to any city building.
Okay, we're complying with, help me here, we're complying with FEMA so that the city can maintain its FEMA grade, rating, and get the discount of five percent.
It's for the community.
But it's not just the city getting the discount, it's the entire community.
It's the community itself.
If we lose participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, we lose the ability for banks to loan on homes here, we'll lose the ability for our group, our area to grow or even to continue. It'll start to degrade because without FEMA, without NFIP behind it, the banks will not loan.
That's the key.
Okay, so if you have private insurance, they won't loan you money, you have to have FEMA insurance?
The community has to be a part of NFIP for the banks to be able to satisfy their requirements to issue a loan. That is my understanding.
And that might be.
That would be correct, and also, you're, the bank, you know, it's a private reaction, it's a private contract between you and the lender, they may require things that even exceed that as well.
I've, I've been connected with a community that lost its flood certification. The bank rates jumped, a lot of bank loans would not complete, we're talking about Goulmer County, Georgia. It was a disaster for the entire community because individuals who had their insurance now found that their rates were climbing because it was not part of the NFIP. The NFIP protects all properties by standardizing the requirements for the properties.
Okay, but aren't private insurance companies coming in here now and giving lower rates than FEMA?
That's what we got, I just told you, San Pebble.
Right, so why would?
Not necessarily for everyone, though, just like, just like citizens, on, on your homeowner's insurance.
Yeah, you can elect to get your own private insurance, but they're still counting on the FEMA, the NFIP program being in place.
Yeah.
See, this doesn't mandate that you have federal flood insurance. Anyone, any private property owner has the option of seeking private insurers for flood insurance. So, it doesn't mandate, it maintains the status quo with regard to the property owner's ability to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, and there's just no downside to that.
Well, okay, I guess maybe I missed that just a little bit, okay? Because it seems to me that if you have private insurance companies now that are offering rates lower than what FEMA is offering, and you can get lower rates for the city by going through a private company, why would you want to have FEMA?
You may not. But then again, we don't know how that would affect a private property owner in Harbor Isles, for example.
Yeah.
We don't know that.
Let me throw this out here.
So, this maintains the options to either participate in the federal flood insurance program, or anyone can seek private insurance if it meets the requirements of their lender.
Okay, I, again, I'm just seeing, you know, as a contractor, we see a lot of what's going on out there in the community, and we see people like Lloyds of London coming in here and giving rates twenty-five, thirty percent less than what FEMA was offering.
And you can still do that, I mean, this doesn't take away that option for anybody.
Well, why would the city want a five percent discount if they can get a twenty-five percent discount?
All it, all this does, once again, is maintain the current option of participating in the federal flood insurance program. No, no private property owner has to participate.
If we elected to get out of FEMA, does that take away the FEMA requirements, the fifty percent rule, does that go away?
No, that's required by the Florida Building Code anyways.
The banks wouldn't like you, that's for sure.
I think you're confusing the code for an insurance policy. This sets the groundwork, just like the building code sets the groundwork for control of construction. This does not set the premium, nor does it set the companies offering insurance. This just sets the groundwork for control of the flood zones, flood zone areas, determining flood zone areas, mapping flood zone areas, and enforcing them. Now, if the city wanted to go out and purchase private insurance, they could certainly do that. That has nothing to do with this, this right here. This ordinance has nothing to do with the city buying insurance. This has to do with the entire city properties, all the properties within the city qualifying to get the insurance where they choose.
And the fifty percent rule pertains to all components of the building code. For example, if fifty percent of your structure was destroyed by fire, or over fifty percent, then when you rebuild, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, then you would need to bring the entire structure up to current day codes, electrical, plumbing, and?
But that's, that's a FEMA regulation.
No.
No, that's a Florida Building Code regulation.
Well, it follows FEMA, though, it's in the building code because of FEMA.
No, it was in the building code before FEMA, it's even in the building code, and FEMA wouldn't, NFIP, which is what we're talking about, is National Flood Insurance Program, it's got nothing to do with when your building burns halfway up, whatever the case may be. It has, that has nothing to do with it. The building code, if, because if you look, the existing building code, there's various chapters of that, one of which.
Houses that are on the water that are?
That's a different issue.
Right.
You have two different.
That's the fifty percent rule I'm referring to, not the fifty percent of the structure.
That's correct, that's, it's still, the, the structure would become fifty percent damaged, it would still have to be brought up to current codes. What this would instill here with this ordinance is you would have to elevate that structure as well.
In a case of where?
And you don't have, you wouldn't have to elevate it if you weren't part of FEMA, or you still would have to elevate it.
Well, if you wouldn't, if it didn't, if your flood plane ordinance would direct you to elevate that, it's not.
So, you say if we got rid of the flood plane ordinance and we not participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, my house gets inundated with flood and they declare it more than fifty percent damage, I have a terraced floor slab on grade, concrete house. There is no elevating, but if we got out of the program, that requirement might go away, but then we'd be unable to get insurance.
But no, you.
Then you would be able to sell it either because there would be low money on it.
Flood insurance that private providers are providing right now would stop if you didn't have this management program in place?
It could.
It depends what their standard, your private insurance companies, they have their own standards that they require for you, okay? So, to be, so to insure your structure, they're gonna want you to meet certain things. They, they may actually in fact exceed this, okay? In order to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, to buy federally mandated loans, to get federally mandated, federally backed insurance, you have to comply with this. If you do not have that, you will not get this. Now, the private insurance companies that you can deal with, if they choose to, you know, cover your, you know, they may have their own set rules, which may in fact exceed this, but I'm, I can guarantee you, I'm sure they're gonna meet these, you're not gonna go build a home and slab on great home in a V-zone and find some insurance company that's gonna cover it. It's, it's just whether, whether you have this in place or not, it's as simple as that.
Well, I'm not necessarily.
Their requirements are gonna probably parallel this.
I agree with that because we have pre-farm homes that they insure.
Those are existing, and they pay for that.
Right.
I mean, you can insure anything, if you want to pay twenty grand a year insurance, that's fine, that's on there.
Here, I'm looking at this because that's my house.
Yeah.
Now, if we did not have the flood insurance program, these private insurers who are coming in here, giving, offering lower rates, might say, well, without a flood program, without a flood maintenance program, you're at a higher risk of loss. They would jack up their rates to reflect that, because it's all based on risk of loss.
Also, keep in mind that if you were, any loans to purchase properties, they have to be insured, okay? And any loan that's, has any kind of federal backing, which is pretty much any kind of loan at all today, you know, the bank that you deal with receives any monies, whatever, from the federal government, that's gonna be considered a federally backed loan, it's gonna have to be insured.
And that's where FEMA comes in.
Yes.
So, then governments force you to use FEMA to get a loan.
Or meet the same requirements.
Okay.
The only, anybody else? The wrinkle I get where I live for twenty years, and thirty years in New York, I look at everything what's factual in front, okay? People say to me, okay, Gene, you know, we live in San Pebble, if buildings two, three, seven, eight, nine, which are in a different zone area for flood, they're grandfathered in, whatever, it's there, it's a fact, done. They pay eighteen thousand dollars a year, here's the, here's the wrinkle we get, a guy goes to get a mortgage for phase one, eighteen thousand dollars is gonna do nothing if there's a flood, and it reaches them, and it does, of course, we know it goes over, whatever. So, the banks will lend the money. You're going to phase three now, you got certain rules and regulations, you have to have the full insurance, two hundred, almost two hundred and fifty thousand, now it's over four hundred thousand with FEMA. So, we're taking different because they were grandfathered in, which is gonna be addressed. But the banks, what gets me, the bank, a guy goes and buys a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home today, and he's got no insurance. The eighteen thousand for the five, it's gonna cover nothing. So, now if anything happens, the bank's gonna bite the bullet, and if it gets wrecked, who goes to pick up the bag, just like Louisiana? Louisiana, who picked up the billions of dollars of Louisiana? The United States government, there was no FEMA insurance to cover that, they didn't have the money, but they picked up, they took care of everything.
We paid for it.
So, here's the, yeah, what I tell people, if you gotta agree, which I have, and I said, you ask questions, you don't dictate, and they're looking at that, they're looking at, they're grandfathered in, they're trying to prorate it over five years, that's the next thing, and I'll bet you I'm dime to the dollar, they're gonna do it, because it's out of balance, because the banks now are being exposed, that's almost like fraud. Why are you charging to people in phase three X amount, they got insurance now, if they didn't have the insurance down there, you would have, you wouldn't even lend them money. You're gonna lend them over there and there's no insurance. Eighteen thousand is not insurance, that's, that's a slap in the jaw. But I tell people, don't jump out the window, we're gonna correct it, we'll correct, but it's definitely lopsided. That's what's going on, the real killer today, I like all this stuff, it's fine, Long Island would have, it's fine. But the bottom line, we're right where we are in building ten, eleven, and twelve, we're in a bad area. But the, if it comes out of the west, technically, whatever, phase one is not covered, and the banks are willing to give them the money, we're gonna have to pay them, the banks will pick up the loss. They'll be, they'll go up there and pick up the loss, who's paying the banks off? We do, we, we, like, you know what happens, when everything collapses in two oh eight, who picked up the banks? We did, we paid the banks for bad mortgages. So, that's the only thing worth, I'm fighting for, is to find out what you can do about that. That's, am I wrong with liability, it's, it's a balancing act of this, does it make sense to charge eighteen thousand for five buildings? Well?
Well, I'm gonna be, according to this paper right here, I'll be paying twenty-six forty-three for one building.
And what are you paying now?
I'm paying sixteen fifty currently.
And what's it gonna be five years from now?
I have no idea.
Well, they're gradually supposed to increase them because they're trying to get people to pay actual rates.
Probably won't have insurance five years from now, I won't be able to afford it. But that's not the fault of the ordinance.
I'm sorry I talked too much, we gotta do it again. I tell people that really jump out the window on the top floor, wait, listen to me, those units were selling for three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars, okay? They're now down to a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty, I just bought one now for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, building ten, third floor, beautiful end unit. So, when you know that you're getting hurt by here, when you, when you balance out, the dust clears, the fog lifts, you stepped in a home. I tell young people twenty-four, twenty-five, coming out of college, jump in the pool, you guys are gonna win, everything's down. It's gotta go up, it's gonna come up, just like the city, we're gonna come back out of this, it's gonna turn around. We're just protecting ourselves, so we're gonna get what happened in New York City and what happened in Louisiana. We gotta make damn sure we're ready for that real big crush that we can protect ourselves, so, that's my spiel. I promise to shut up for a while. Anybody else?
Bill, I've got a couple questions. You indicated that it was one foot above elevation. Is the elevation in the city standard, or is?
No, it's one foot above base flood elevation, so if.
BFE.
So, so if your base flood elevation is thirteen feet, your first living level would be at fourteen, for example.
Is that level set throughout the city? Or is it, does it vary depending on?
It varies depending on where you are located in the city, the flood maps determine what that is.
Okay.
That level is determined by engineering studies, which they do on the community as a whole. The flood map process is one performed by mostly Dewberry and Davis up in Washington under contract to FEMA, and they're doing engineering studies on the impact of rain and flood and water, and how well water leaves an area, such as the inland areas. Now, where I live, close to the water, I'm, I'm looking at storm surge.
Yes.
And that's recorded with history.
And if I may, and Bill, correct me if I'm mistaken, if you're in a V-zone, the lowest member of your house needs to be one foot above freeboard, okay? If you're in an A-zone, then your floor level can be at your floor level, not the lowest member. So, there is a difference between an A and a V-zone.
Okay.
So, what they're doing is water levels are rising, everybody knows that, so they went ahead and set it one foot above BFE to protect us for a number of years in the future.
On page four, section eight nine, eight dash nine, there's a reference here to.
I'm sorry, what page, please?
On page four. Section eight dash. Section eight dash nine, there's a reference here to a study, it's dated September 26th, 2014. Is that a typo, or is there another study being done?
That is the flood study they've been working on, they've held hearings on it, it will actually take effect on that date.
Okay.
But they have been working on that study for several years now. Last year, they held hearings at Pasco on the different areas on that study, to go and look at it. It's not a study that's done within a month, it takes years to perform these studies properly.
That's being done by Pasco County. Okay.
That's their anticipated effective date.
Okay.
I think it's obvious, it's to the advantage of the city and all its residents, so I'd like to make a motion to approve this amended ordinance.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So be it.
All right, Gene, adjourn the meeting.